With the computer off in front of me and I dozed off. And I had the TV news on, but hey, I can do this after that anytime. So Mary, if you didn't text me, I'd still be like sitting here asleep. So then I couldn't get on. I could, it kept my, my mouse, my, not my mouse, my cursor freezes now. Even though it's like a one and a half year old computer. And Michael blanks said, I have to like take it to someone else. He can't deal with that. So I tried to get on my phone and my phone says, I'm not on Zoom anymore. And they tried to say, welcome to Zoom, like this is how you join. So I was in total panic mode and then the, um, the thing unfroze.
Hey guys, I'm sorry I was late. Did you already get the meeting going?
No.
Okay, apologies. Budget meeting is running late today. My, my own fault, but uh, let me just go ahead and kick us off. Uh, date is March 21st. This is a committee of the whole meeting. Uh, uh, being scheduled via Zoom. Consistent with the governor's order to allow public meetings via Zoom. We have one item on our agenda that is the discussion on proposed changes to policy. Three, six, oh, one student transportation services. Let me go ahead as we call this meeting to order and call the role. Please let me know if you're present, Ms. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming.
Yes.
Dr. Pangalo. Ms. Cornell.
Yes.
Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yep.
Mayor Driscoll, yes. We had now have six members present. Again, apologies for being late. Um, and let's go ahead and get started. We've got first item up is the policy committees review of our transportation services, uh, policy. I'd entertain, I guess, a discussion from our policy chair or a member of the policy committee. I believe that's where it went.
Yes, yes. So we have been, uh, discussing changes to the transportation policy. It's, um, we've gotten into the weeds a lot. Um, but Vanessa, who is our wonderful transportation director. He's also, she's also got like a computer brain, as far as I can tell, has worked us through every last piece of information that we have asked for. Um, and, uh, it took us a while. It's really complicated stuff. And, um, so, uh, maybe we could not get into the weeds today, but we'll see. Uh, Vanessa is going to present this to us as clearly as possible. And I think it's most of the stuff that Mary and Manny and I got really needed a long time to get, have, have a sort of work through it. But, uh, I think, I think Vanessa has kind of distilled down the things that we all need to understand in order to, to, um, send this policy for, uh, a first read. So I will hand it over to Vanessa. Who is going to talk us through some stuff?
Uh, Beth Ann, could we just, uh, provide a little bit of context, uh, to the committee members? About how this transportation policy came back to us, I think, before she gets into her larger presentation. I think it would be helpful if folks heard about the, uh, the other group of administrators that came before us as well, just so that way they get an understanding of, you know, kind of the genesis of some of the recommended changes that are coming our way.
Yeah. So the first subcommittee meeting that we had, uh, Steve brought in, uh, you know, a lot of different representatives from his team. So that we, uh, made sure we were understanding the change in policy through the lens of equity. Through, uh, Mary walked us through a lot of the budgeting information. Vanessa walked us through logistics. We talked a lot about our newcomers, uh, and how they fit into the program. Uh, we talked about our, um, our, you know, homeless students or other at-risk students. So we had a really great, robust discussion where all the members of, uh, Dr. Strike's team was able, were able to kind of provide us, uh, with a lens onto all of our students, just so that we could make some informed decisions. Um, and then by the time we got to the second, the second meeting, uh, I think Steve's team felt pretty satisfied with the proposals to, uh, you know, the language proposals, which again Vanessa is going to kind of give us a little bit of an overview. Um, you know, in the first slide, which first and second slides, which will kind of explain this all a little bit more clearly. Um, is there anything you want to add to that, Manny?
I think that was a great summary. I think I just wanted to make sure committee members had an understanding that there were uh, many different folks across the districts who actually came in to discuss some of the challenges that the existing policy was creating. Um, and I think that that context helps folks understand that, um, you know, there was a lot of due diligence that came from members of the team that then led to, um, you know, teeing up Vanessa to be able to make those, uh, logistical, uh, changes, but then also the policy recommendations that could kind of satisfy all of the stakeholders with respect to the various needs that were brought up.
Yep. Okay.
Great job.
Mary?
I was just gonna add one thing and Manny may remember this more exactly than me. I think there was also that we, we found out that some of the reworking of the policy that the, that we had done. A year, more than a year ago, I think, um, actually hadn't. Uh, I'm not, I'm not, there was an issue with it hadn't actually, and Manny helped me here. Wasn't there something that it skipped a step or something had happened with? Some of the changes we were surprised were still in there as, as changes, but not officially put in. So I forget exactly what, but we did try to also clear that up. Manny, you remember what I'm trying to think of? I, I can't. I know there was some issue though. And so.
Happy to fill committee members in. So we, we did change this policy, um, over a year ago. After we had heard concerns from the previous multilingual director that, uh, there were some serious, uh, concerns about being able to provide transportation equitably to newcomers. And so we did tweak the language to try to satisfy, I think, um, the need that we, they were seeing in the district. And I think the unintended consequence of the change was that we didn't address, uh, some of the logistical concerns, uh, with transportation around non-mandatory riders. Uh, and so what we were unintended, uh, consequence of kind of our actions was we just created, I think, um, a lack of guidance for the district with respect to how do they prioritize who gets transportation? Uh, if they're a non-mandatory rider. So that was the, the piece that I think we hadn't heard, we hadn't heard back on this. Uh, I think primarily due to the pandemic, we weren't transporting nearly as many kids. And then by the time you had students coming back, uh, fully in person, uh, you were trying to manage, uh, the transportation system. And I think that's where things kind of bubbled up to the point where, um, some of the stakeholders that were previously mentioned came together to try to recommend, uh, some policy changes.
Great. Beth Ann, uh, Ms. Cornell, do you want to continue maybe with just a summary of, uh, what you're about to start with?
Yeah, basically this is, we're, I think the suggestion is that we're putting into policy, a lot of things that we have been doing in practice, but that have not been explicit. So the thinking is that these policies are going to make it a lot more clear for families when they are, you know, considering whether or not they're eligible for, uh, ridership. Uh, so if we can, I think it would be great to have Vanessa kind of walk us through the details. Um, and then it, this sort of sets a context for all of us.
All right. So can I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, let me see. Did I see that? Oh, not yet. Let me see. Okay, let me present just a second. I'm not sure if it's up yet.
Yeah. Loading though.
Oh man. All right. Yeah. So, um, basically here I'm going to compare, you know, three different, um, you know, sections, what we're required to do by law, what our current practice is and what we're proposing. Um, so that we can compare and kind of see that visually. Oh man, what is going on? Uh, let me try again. Maybe because I have like a million tabs open, that might be it. Half my tabs.
I suffer from the same illness, Vanessa. All right.
Well, Vanessa's doing that. May, maybe I could just add like, uh, my supreme gratefulness to, to Vanessa, because she has for all the meetings, well, prepared in great detail, everything that we were trying to figure out. You know, and then in language that everybody, even myself, could actually understand. And then we would say, could you come back with something else? And she's back with something else. So, you know, Vanessa, you might have too many tabs open, but you've been an absolute godsend during this whole process. When we've been trying to take a look at this and, and, you know, revise it.
Oh man, what is? Of course.
Do you want to email, email it to me or to Jensen and we can put, put it up? Was that easier?
Yeah, I think so, cause.
Vanessa, you share it with me. I'll open it.
Okay. Well, do. Okay.
It's a full moon. That's really what it's about.
All right, I just sent it. Sorry about that, guys. There's always a glitch.
No, that's okay.
I'm not still sharing my screen, am I?
Nope.
All right. Oh man. Did you get it, Jensen?
Yep, opening it now.
Speaking of helpful people, there's Jensen.
It's starting on slide seventeen.
Cause the other slide for our weeds.
There's a clue.
Yeah. The slides prior to seventeen are definitely the weeds. So we don't need to get in there.
I know, and that's no better, Vanessa. Well, we're gonna make it work.
Oh man, why is, I wonder what's going on?
Do you want me to try? I have it up. Oh, it looks like you're there.
Get in there.
Something's happening.
Here you go. Bye.
All right, there we go. All right. Yeah. So, um, you know, this is in our policy and, you know, according to, you know, Massachusetts general law, um, what we're legally required, you know, to provide in terms of transportation. So I'll let that pop up, cause. Oh man.
This should make you feel a little bit about it.
There we go. All right. Yeah, I know. Right. What's going on? All right. Yeah. So, um, you know, Mass General Law, um, chapter seventy-one, section sixty-eight states that if the distance between a child's residence and the school, he or she is entitled to attend is two miles or more. Oops. Yep. So we're required to provide transportation to students in grades K through six who live more than two miles from the school, or if the bus stop is more than one mile from the school. Those are our only legal requirements. And though these students by law are considered mandatory riders. We are required to transport with no cost. All right. And then, um, so the next slide. So this is also, um, summarizing the policy, but you know, all other students would be considered non-mandatory riders. So in the case of transportation provided to students that is not required by this section or by any other general specific law, a school committee may assess fees to the transported student up to the amount sufficient to cover the cost incurred. Um, and then it talks about, you know, students who are low income, will have free or reduced lunch. Um, you know, and other families who can be exempt from paying the fee. So, you know, basically by law, we're required to transport students over two miles and we can provide transportation for a fee um, to students who live under that mileage requirement and it's only grades K through six. But if we see in the next slide, um, we are currently a, um, a little bit more generous than what the law requires. Um, so if you see here in the state requirement, the first column, like I, I just said, in grades K through six, you get transportation over two miles. There's nothing for pre-K and also no requirements for grade seven through twelve. Our current practice is that, you know, we don't do transportation for pre-K, but we consider mandatory riders in grades K through two over a mile. Grades three to five, we consider them mandatory over a mile and a half. In sixth grade, they're mandatory over two miles. But, um, just like, you know, the law, in grades seven through twelve, all students are considered non-mandatory. Except newcomers. Um, so they can apply for a fee and will be granted transportation if space permits, but it's on a first come, first served basis. So in the new pol, in the policy, what we're proposing is, you know, to keep the same requirements for grades K through two, which is, you know, very generous. The same for grades three to five, the same for grade six. But now we want to, you know, um, provide students in grades seven through twelve over two miles. Uh, we want to make them mandatory riders as well. All right. Any questions on this?
If you have questions, can you raise your hand, um, uh, Mr. Fleming? If you can use the raised hand function, because I can't see everybody when I'm in, uh.
Okay.
But go ahead, Mr. Fleming. I saw your hand.
Yeah. Are those distances then from the bus stop to school or from the house to school, to the bus stop to school?
No, we calculate the distance from home to the school they attend.
From home to school. Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question, just to make sure I'm clear on reading this.
Yep.
So over two miles. Our current practice is over two ri, over two miles, we provide buses, correct?
Yeah, they're considered mandatory riders. We're required to transport them.
Right.
Yep. Only up to grade six, though. Are you talking about the law or our current practice?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what we're changing, I guess. Um, are we looking to change anything?
Yeah. So for mandatory riders, this is just capturing mandatory riders. We've been now included grades seven through twelve. Before there were no requirements for grade seven through twelve.
Okay, got it.
That's the only change to mandatory riders.
And Vanessa, can I just interject here? We actually didn't, uh, prior to the, to the language changes that are in everybody's packets, even though this was our practice, we didn't have it stated right in the policy that K through second, w- we provide transportation over a mile or, um, three through five was one point five. It was just something we've been doing in practice. So part of the policy change is adding the language for, you know, a practice that we've already been doing.
Okay, got it. Ms. Manning?
Uh, well, I just want to also point out that in addition to, to the change in mileage, there's no fee mentioned in the last post, the last column.
Yeah, I'm going to, um, get into that in the next slide.
Okay. I just didn't want to be saying it was the only change. Okay.
Yes, because mandatory riders don't pay. So these are just mandatory riders. They don't pay at all. Before, non-mandatory riders would pay.
Got it.
All right. Can we go to the next one? All right. So obviously, you know, after we've provided transportation to the mandatory riders, we still have some excess capacity. So the big question was, what do we do with this excess capacity? How do we prioritize students? Who should be getting, you know, the excess capacity? How we have more, you know, demand than we have room for? So what are we doing? So we've traditionally been assigning students first come, first served, if they're non-mandatory. So, um, in grades K through two, there aren't any non-mandatory riders, because we don't provide transportation under one mile. So all students who apply are mandatory. If that makes sense. And then grades three to five, they're mandatory at one point five, but they can apply from one mile to one point five. They are non-mandatory. They were, they're currently being assigned first come, first served. Grade six, they can apply between one mile and two miles. They're non-mandatory. But we assign them first come, first served. And then in grades seven to twelve, all students who apply are non-mandatory. They get assigned first come, first served. So what we're proposing, most of our change is here. First, we removed, um, fees. That's, um, our proposal to not charge fees for any of our families, mandatory or non-mandatory. And, um, we now in grades, um, K through two, nothing changes. Because like I said, anyone who applies over a mile is mandatory in K through two. So three to five, non-mandatory students are still those between one mile and one mile and a half. But now we will assign them by a tiered process, which I will explain in the next slide. And then in sixth grade, six through twelve, it's the same thing. They can now apply only starting at a mile and a half. And they will be assigned by, um, to a tiered process as well. Any questions on this? I will get into the tier process in the next slide.
Any questions, uh, for Vanessa? Mr. Fleming?
How does the driver determine, uh, the status of the pupil getting on the bus?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, could you clarify that? I couldn't hear very well. I don't know if there was like a little.
I think the question was, how does the driver determine the status of the student getting on the bus? Is there a bus pass or something? Is that what you mean, Mr. Fleming?
Correct, ma'am.
Okay, yes, thank you. Yes, there is a bus pass student. All students need bus passes to ride. Um, yeah, they can only get on in the morning and afternoon with their bus pass.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, why don't we keep going, Vanessa?
All right. So this is all a new proposal. Like I said, prior, currently it's first come, first served. And we want to propose, you know, change so that it's more equitable. So that students that are, you know, at higher risk or more need, get transportation, you know, they're prioritized. So, you know, student bus transportation shall be provided, shall only be provided to non-mandatory riders if there is excess capacity on buses being used to service mandatory riders. Seats shall be assigned on a priority basis to non-mandatory students using the following criteria, which, um, are economic status, unsafe zones, younger siblings. Um, so unsafe zones is, you know, we are going to try to work in collaboration, you know, with the police department, um, and other officials to determine unsafe walking zones. You know, we get, you know, we have several, some areas in the city that, let's say, for example, some areas on Highland Ave, where, where maybe the mileage is okay, but the walk is unsafe, for example. Um, and a younger sibling is if they have a younger sibling at the school they attend, even though they're not within, let's say the mandatory mileage requirement, we would, you know, prioritize them since they already have a sibling at that school. Similar to the assignment policy. And, um, you know, economic status as well.
Can I add one thing to this, Vanessa?
Yep.
Um, we, I just want the, the rest of the committee to know that we talked a lot about how, about, uh, students with chronic absenteeism. And Vanessa was really great. She sort of, um, she, she identified anonymously students, uh, suffering from chronic absenteeism and kind of mapped them out all over the city for us, so we could see where folks lived. And one of the, um, one of the changes to the policy is that schools, and Mary, just correct me if I'm, if I'm stating this wrong, but that if schools identify a student as, um, for whom transportation is a major cause of chronic absenteeism, that student then gets flagged um, to be a mandatory rider or non-mandatory rider. Sorry.
So, Beth, Beth Ann, to clarify, um, that was an existing function of the previous policy, but we cleaned it up to actually, um, clarify who identifies the student. Cause before, if you look at the strikeout, um, it, it does read students who show early warning signs of chronic absenteeism. And the cause determined, uh, is transportation, that they just get referred to the superintendent's office. But there wasn't a clear delineation of who makes that determination. Uh, and so we wanted to just more clearly spell out that it would be a school-based, uh, kind of assessment.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Fleming?
Which was the practice.
No question.
Uh, Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I just, just one thing too. I just want to explain that in this particular slide, those three criteria are simply in alphabetical order. That's not a, a ranked, um, order yet. I think Beth Ann's probably going to talk more about that, but I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? If not, why don't we, uh, is there further slides?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right. So this is the breakdown of how, you know, the tiers work. So providing seats are available, the transportation, you know, I will assess the criteria for non-mandatory ridership request using the following tiered process. So students would qualify under tier one if they meet all three of those, um, of the criteria. So they have a younger sibling, you know, they, um, they're low income and they're at an unsafe walk zone. So we would put them in tier one. And then tier two are, you know, applicants who have two of those three criteria. And tier three would be, um, students who only have one of the three. Um, so we would, you know, um, provide transportation for students in tier one first. If we still have leftover space, we would then assign students in tier two. And then lastly, um, tier three. And there's just one more. This is just, so we, um, just to know, this is from directly from the policy. So we also, um, you know, include students who receive transportation through their IP or 504 plan. Um, also newcomers, you know, who have arrived in the United States within twelve months. Um, students who are homeless or in foster care and, um, the superintendent's exception for chronic absenteeism. So all these, um, we also have these, um, this in place in the policy for these populations as well, to guarantee them transportation. That's why they weren't included in the criteria.
Ms. Manning, do you have another question? Or is that your hand up from the last one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do the.
Uh, Ms. Campbell?
Thank you. Um, in terms of the tiering, is the idea that within those tiers, um, they would essentially service first come, first served, or would you hold slots for future? Like if I moved in December and all, I met all three criteria, I had all three that would place me in tier one as a non-mandatory rider. Would the, like, if you had fifty kids, would you go all up tier one, then all up tier two, then all up tier three? Or would you hold spots for future arrivals in tier one or tier two?
That's a great question, because we were, um, talking about this part of it. Yeah. So initially, um, in grades K, six through twelve, students could apply over one mile. So now you're talking about from one mile to two miles, you're capturing all these students. But now we're suggesting to, for students to apply between one mile and a half and two miles. That way we might be able to service most of them, hopefully. You know, so we should be able to, to assign all students in tier one, you know, and most students. But if there is a situation where we don't have, you know, room for everyone, that is a discussion to have, you know, either we, we would further break them down for some by mileage. You know, we wouldn't further break them down by first come, first served. Really, you know, that's something I think for the committee to decide if, you know, it comes down to that, or if that should be, you know, I'm, we're open to suggestions if that is the case.
I think we did also have, as you said, we had a lot of conversations about being able to build in open seats for newcomers, transfers into the district. And so I think that, um, this is something that I think doesn't have to be baked into the policy necessarily, but is kind of a function, you know, part of the, the, what Vanessa's job entails is sort of figuring out how to hold seats open, because we're always having, you know, kids come into and out of the district. So, um, you know, that was, that was part of the conversation. So it's like, I, I think we're, we're expecting that the new, um, policies give Vanessa more of, you know, a little bit of an ability to kind of project into the future and say, okay, that, you know, this is how many seats we can afford to hold and probably should hold, you know, um, given what we've seen in the past. Although I imagine that this next, if this policies, if these policies are put into place for, um, this coming fall, it'll be a little bit of a learning curve, I think, for this, this year.
Any other thoughts or concerns? I'm wondering if, uh, committee members can speak to. I feel like right now this policy, the, the, the actual people, students that we're servicing, um, we are servicing students uh, that don't mimic the current policy, but fit more into the proposed policy. And at the same time, also trying to prioritize, making sure we're not leaving students out because we don't have space, but picking up students who don't meet the, you know, some of these minimum thresholds. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Do, do we have any idea of the number of students that won't be served, like that will, that would drop off? Because they, they, I mean, I guess it's hard to say. We have this tiered structure and some of it, so much of it changes from year to year about who's requesting transportation or who's not. So I'm just trying to think about who we're going to be hearing from next year.
Good question.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. That's probably like, I ran a lot of data. We had lots of numbers going on. Um, but yeah, so, you know, the students that we would kind of drop would be the students in grades six through twelve who live between a mile and a mile and a half. who live between a mile and a mile and a half. So they would not receive transportation.
And any idea of what that, is that 100 kids? Is that 20 kids right now?
Um, I can, I can tell you that. If you give me a couple of minutes, I will review that. You guys can just.
We'll talk amongst ourselves. Mr. Cruz, I know you had your hand up. Is there something you wanted to offer for a comment or a question?
I was just going to add the piece around some of the projections that Vanessa had done regarding some of these scenarios. I know one of the things that wasn't in the presentation today, but I think would be helpful materials for folks to digest was the total number of folks that are currently considered mandatory riders, and then what, how many of them actually take the transportation off, option offered by the district? And then the number of non-mandatory riders. And then there was like the adjustment for, you know, what would happen if the folks that were in that non-mandatory pool became mandatory riders. So I do think that would be helpful materials for committee members to receive, just so that way they're working with the same information that we did see at the policy subcommittee level, and folks can kind of further assess some of the shifts as well. And I know that there was a conversation regarding that, the window of a mile and a half, or a mile to a mile and a half, and like, where's kind of the sweet spot? And I know we had had a conversation about like the 1.25 between, like, in the mile and a half for that particular group of students. And it's tricky. I mean, some folks are definitely going to end up losing out, and we're going to hear from them. And at the same time, there are some really challenging situations for students that we can't currently provide transportation to, that are non-mandatory rider, that are, that would be mandatory riders on this policy, but because of the number of non-mandatory riders we currently have, there's no space for them on the bus. So I do think that those are some of the considerations that we have to wrestle with. So I, I do think you all having that information will help you all kind of reach a decision on where we might need to tweak this and/or whether or not you're going to vote for it down the line.
Thank you, Manny. Really good point. Vanessa, let us know whenever you're ready with that data point, but I'm just going to keep calling on folks. Ms. Cornell?
And I just want to point out that we still have, you know, the superintendent's discretion if there are, you know, really exceptional circumstances that arise. But this, you know, I, I think going back and forth with Vanessa, because she does have her hands on so much data, she really understands how all the data breaks down in a really, you know, fine way that it, you know, this policy seems to capture more of the students who really need transportation than, than we currently have. But I just wanted to throw in, throw that in there about the super, superintendent's discretion, because superintendent is still able to, you know, put a student on a bus if, if that student really has an exceptional circumstance.
Thank you for that. Ms. Campbell?
Sure, this might have to do with what Vanessa's looking up right now, but the only thing I'm thinking about in regards to that mile to mile and a half are particularly, obviously, that's not a long distance or a really walkable city. But I am particularly thinking about students who live in what would be deemed unsafe zones. And I, I'm sure that the policy has talked through this. I'm sure I'm not the first to raise this, and I'm wondering if you can talk about, did you consider a way to tier them in addition to the non-mandatory riders? I'm just wondering, that's the only part that makes me nervous, is if they wouldn't have the option to ride even as, like, they wouldn't even have access under the tiered service because they're in too short a distance. I'm just thinking about that in particular.
Yeah, I have those, I have the numbers. So I will compare, if we, we looked at all the students in the district, how many, how many students we're talking about. So it will be grade six through 12 that live a mile to a mile and a half. These are the students that are being excluded now, removed from the, from the policy. So if we looked at all students in the district, we're talking about, where are we, what are we talking about? All students? Oh, man, it just happened. Nothing's working, collaborating with me today. Technology is not helping me today. Just a second. 526 students. But current riders, if we took the pool from our current riders, students in six or 12 that are currently riding between a mile and a mile and a half, we're looking at 200, and we're, we're. We're looking at 215. I know that seems a lot, but this is the part that I think why the, the new language is so important. So what was happening before, as I mentioned, it was first come, first served. So students who are over a mile, it's like a kind of free for all. Whoever gets their application in first gets a spot on the bus. So you have all these students who live about a mile, about 1.2, 1.3, receiving transportation. And then we have a waitlist going on of students who are over two miles, over two and a half, three miles. And since they maybe didn't have the knowledge, the means to apply early, and I, you know, we don't know the circumstances, they missed the cut, they applied late, and now they don't have a spot. Where we have now 215 students, you know, receiving transportation from 1.1.5. So this, you know, although this seems a lot, I would like everyone to take that into consideration. But this is part of the problem.
Appreciate that. Ms. Cornell, and then Mr. Fleming?
And I would just say, to that point, Amanda, the, the kids right now who are under one or under 1.5, we're not currently serving them anyway. So it's not really a change necessarily. And I do think that's where, you know, you've got that, maybe that's the opportunity for the superintendent discretion, if it's a really extreme circumstance. But I all, you know, with the tiered system, the, I think the tier system was Mary's idea, which I, I really liked, because you're only going to have a certain number of students who really check all three of those boxes. So I think if you, if you do, oh, actually, that doesn't address your question about being under 1.5 or one. Yeah. But like I said, we're not serving those kids at the moment anyway. But again, the superintendent's discretion, I guess, if it were a really exceptional circumstance, could help.
Right, I guess, I'm just thinking about, like, from the perspective, like, you might, if you know your child's distance that they would walk is really unsafe, you might be on the ball and requesting it every single time. And I hear your point. That's not, that's not to disagree with Vanessa's point about, like, that means we're not serving other kids whose, whose needs might be greater. I'm 100% on board with that. I just would love to see some type of function where family, like, because I think it's a different circumstance. If you have a sixth grader who's walking a mile down and has to cross Highland Ave where there are limited pedestrian crossings, like, that's a gap we know as a city exists. And so I, yes, maybe the function is the superintendent's consideration. It could be that there aren't that many students affected by it, but it could be that they exist within. I know it, I would be really worried about it if, if that was my child's walk, and I would want to see that reflected somehow, or at least some type of way to know, like, I, I get tiered, like, I love the idea of the tiers, maybe just something additional could be like, if you are a one to 1.5, and you meet all three criteria, or you meet in particular the unsafe walking criteria that gets you into a tier somewhere, even if it's tier three, or even if it's a new special tier four, something like that.
Miss, any, Mr. Fleming?
What is the start date for if the new policy is approved?
Yeah, that's kind of why we're in a little bit of a rush. So we typically send out all the paperwork to families May 1st.
So the, all right, and those that will no longer be eligible to ride will receive notice on May 1st for start of school next year, September?
So, yep, so in addition to these policy changes, I'm also changing the way we do the application process. I'm automatically enrolling students who are mandatory riders. So we focus our communication and outreach on the non-mandatory riders. So we'll be communicating if they are no longer eligible. We'll communicate, you know, the new, the new requirements, the new policy. And so since we are automatically enrolling mandatory students, our focus will be on the non-mandatory.
And finally, is there an appeal process in that? Can they appeal a denial?
I think that would probably fall into the.
Would go to the superintendent, I suspect.
It would be the superintendent's exception.
Anything else, Mr. Fleming? Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I'm, as far as, I'm just thinking, oh, wait a minute. Oh, my hand. Damn it, now I lost everybody.
We can hear you.
I'm thinking about the, okay. I'm thinking about the unsafe issue, which was part of the tier idea. I mean, we, we, we have, you know, if this goes through a first reading, we still have two more, you know, and I would, just speaking for me, be willing to take another look at that. If we can get the input, maybe from the police, or, you know, whoever we're going to look to to do that fairly quickly. So that we're talking about, I mean, I, I'm thinking, I had put that on the table, and I was thinking of, you know, only maybe two or three spots in the city. I'm thinking of somebody that misses the bus and they live at Loring Towers. And I'm thinking of the kids walking up and down Highland Ave, regardless if they're a third grader or a, or a 12th grader. You get hit by a bus on Highland Ave, you, you know, it's, you know, a major calamity either way, however old you are. So I'd be willing to, like, you know, at least say that we, we could take another look at it, depending on if we get input from the, the police back. I mean, I, every area of the city is going to have a street parents are afraid of, or a, you know, whatever. So I don't want to say that we would just re-look at this with, you know, 25 unsafe zones in a city the size of Salem. But if this, if there's a limited number, we would have time with two more readings coming up to at least take another good, hard look at that. I don't know if that helps, you know, with Amanda, with your question and stuff, but, and I don't know where the rest of the committee is, but I would follow on that, on the subcommittee.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, so I, I do find Ms. Campbell's comments pretty persuasive with respect to the safety issue. And then, Mr. Fleming, I'm, I'm hearing your line of questioning with respect to the students that we'd now be excluding. And I think there's some issues there at play. So I'd be open to taking a look at the policy with respect to, you know, that, that, that next tier. I do think the one piece that I'll just, again, flag, so committee members can take a really good look at it, is taking a look at the data to see the kind of space that we have available. There are going to be some constraints, and some folks just simply are not going to be able to be transported. And I think that that's just the reality that we're going to have to accept one way or another. So to that end, you know, I do think it would be super helpful for committee members to also think through some of that language as well, if they have anything that they'd want to propose. Now, take a real good look at what's been put forward, and if there is a fourth tier or something that we could take a look at, you know, just send over some suggested language, and we can do that, you know, between the next few readings to just make sure that, you know, we can come back to all with what this actually means in practice. And I think, you know, give it its due consideration.
Thoughts? I mean, I know the committee spent a lot of time on this. I know staff has spent a lot of time on this. And I know our transportation system is imperfect and certainly can be chaotic. And I know it's expensive. So I think what we're trying to solve for is making sure we're giving some order. So that's, you know, we're, we're not creating more chaos, and also trying to address equity issues. We have students who come in at the end of the year and don't have room that are more needy than folks who may have signed up, but are not even within our own more robust transportation policy than the state policy. We need to really think about it. I don't think we can serve everybody well. So we do need to set up some prioritizations and some, I guess, some agency with where are the issues we care about the most? And then what are the places that are not mandatory that gives us some latitude to ensure we're serving people who, students who need this, students and families who need this service. Because right now, we're not doing either well. It's a mishmash. It's hard for staff. We have folks around the bus who don't qualify to meet our minimum standards. We have folks who meet our minimum standards that aren't able to get transportation. So I appreciate the desire to give it some order. You know, I'm eyeing the time and also knowing that we're meeting today at seven. Does it make some sense for us to try and move forward with this version, and then try and, if there's additional tweaking that's necessary, to put that into play for, you know, between the second and third reading? I just want to hear what's on people's minds. Ms. Manning and then Mr. Fleming?
I just think if we don't put it forward for the first, I mean, we have to keep in mind that we want to get it out, they want to get it out in, in the beginning of May. So if we don't do a first reading, knowing it's going to be some tweaking, but certainly, I would certainly push to move it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm suggesting that we, we definitely want to try and move it with this version the way it is, and then allow some additional time for the committee to work on additional refinement, if necessary. Mr. Fleming?
I would agree with you, ma'am. And I would ask the committee, the whole, to rise up and report to the committee, school committee, that we've looked at this policy and we say it's ready for our first reading.
Motion made by Mr. Fleming. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cruz. Under discussion? Any further discussion on this? Okay. Um, I think we'll take an order. We'll take a motion on the rise and report, just so we're prepared to move forward. All those in favor, Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Cornell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Driscoll, yes, six members voting, six in the affirmative. So we stand, we are rising and reporting, I guess. We'll see everyone at seven. And I appreciate the hard work of the committee and the staff. I know this was a lot of information to, to, to move forward with and to give some order to. So thank you for the work ahead of time on it. See you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Vanessa and Mary.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Do we need a motion?
No, we, we rose and reported. We're good.
Oh, that's enough? Okay. Robert and I aren't real close. Okay. Thanks.